Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Cole Poniewich.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Ms. Antelis.
Here.
Mr. Braverman. Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Poi. Mr. Prezioso.
Yeah.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted May 1st, 2013, one at All Schools, two, Home News Tribune, three, Cranberry Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the Municipality. At this time, we will have our Teacher of the Year awards, and I know that a lot of them are coming in, so we'll hopefully have a chance to have all of them show up. And here tonight, we are honoring our Teachers of the Year, and prior to this dinner, prior to this meeting, we've had a dinner that was prepared and served by our students in our Culinary Arts Program, and it was fantastic, and I think the dinner we had this evening would rival any restaurant we have in Monroe or in the area. Tonight, we're honoring the best of the best in teachers of our district. They're all, our honorees tonight are dedicated, caring, and professional, who make a difference in the lives of children every single day and help shape the future. So at this time, we'd like to honor them at a board meeting with a plaque. So Dr. Hamilton would be...
Yes. As I call you, and we'll present the plaques in the middle of the room, and for those of you who are interested in photo ops, I'm going to ask that your building principal also join us at that time so they can be a part of that photo op, okay?
Okay, our first honoree this evening is from Brookside School. The Monroe Township School District honors Jennifer Matoroki, Teacher of the Year, Brookside From Mill Lake School, Danielle Ciopoli. And last but not least, from Monroe Township High School, Renata McKenzie. Congratulations to all of our teachers and their principals.
This time, we will go to number six on our agenda, Early Enrichment Program Proposal. Dr. Hamilton?
Okay. Good evening, all. We have been working on developing a program to augment our current MECA program. This program has been developed in collaboration with myself, Marietta Ruela, who is the Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and the Director of MECA, and our head teacher there, Sharon Jensen. I almost drew a blank there, Sharon, sorry. And we've put together a proposal that we presented to the Finance Committee last week. We are now presenting to the full board for consideration. This program is designed to accomplish a couple of things. One is to create a mechanism that would restore the advancements made to the MECA program from the Monroe Township Board of Education, to enhance our educational program for our students, and lastly, to make the program self-sufficient and create a solvency initiative. So with that, I will turn it over to Marietta and Sharon.
Our enrichment program would be a structured program that would offer an extension to our existing kindergarten day. The program will reinforce the learning that's taking place in the kindergarten classrooms to help meet those common core state standards, which is a difficult task in just a two-and-a-half-hour The MECA enrollment has increased over this school year. The projected September enrollment, the business has doubled come September. This leaves us with the opportunity to develop new programs to further increase our enrollment and our revenue. As you know, there's no full-day kindergarten in the school district. The only option for the families is being run by an outside company. There are a total of 234 students registered for this upcoming school year. We called the surrounding school districts to see what type of programs they do if they're only running a half-day kindergarten. These were the results. We only found four school districts that we called that have a district-run enrichment We surveyed our current registered kindergarten families. The numbers on the sheet you have might not be the numbers you see up here because we were still calling even this afternoon to try and reach as many families as we possibly could. I'm just going to step in here and just to talk to you a little bit about, 238 students have registered at this time for our kindergarten program, but the expectation is that also increases during the summer, and we will increase to continue our survey. We have a small portion here, when you're probably looking at it, you're saying 89 families were contacted, but we were contacting during the school day, which many parents are working, and that's part of what this program is about. It's really directed to those parents that have students, kindergarten children, that either at this point were going to KRAP or they were going to some type of sitting care. So this is going to be a program not only to service our residents, but it's also going to be an enrichment program. It's going to be an educational program that will be provided for the district. Some of the responses when we were speaking with the families on the phone was that they are worried that their children are going from a half, a full-day preschool program into just a half-day kindergarten program. They preferred the idea of a structured program that's run by the district, not an outside company. They said it felt, you know, safer, it gave them more familiarity, you know, just to have that better feeling that their child is being taken care of in the best way possible. They also appreciate a program that's focused on quality at an affordable cost. So you can see that if we could implement the enrichment program, the potential for MECA's enrollment would soar and, you know, definitely bring in the numbers and the revenue that is needed. Parents would choose MECA for our low cost, the lunch program, transportation, that safe and secure environment, and we also have the high school curriculum that we're currently using in our preschool class now, we would also be using in the enrichment program. The high school curriculum is a wonderful curriculum that it sets a classroom that the learning environment is child-directed, it's hands-on, everything is developmentally appropriate, they have their plan-do-and-review sequence along with their daily schedule, and they're getting in those key developmental indicators to get everything they can out of their school day. So MECA is a wonderful center where we have the flexibility to utilize the building in a way that benefits our employees to give them the quality childcare, but it also gives us that capability to implement programs to help the Monroe Township residents. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will take this into consideration, how helpful it will be to our residents, how much it will service our students, because we have a growing population.
Marietta, if you and Sharon would just kind of hang at the microphone in case board members have question, Madam President.
I think we have a resolution that we'll read, and then we'll open it up to the board for comments or questions, and then we'll open it up to the public for comments or questions. Ms. Antelis?
Thank you. It is recommended by the Finance Committee that the Board of Education approve the early childhood enrichment program to operate in conjunction with MECA at a monthly rate of $400 per student for a full-time program effective September 1st, 2013, and to authorize the Superintendent and the Business Administrator Board Secretary to take necessary steps to ensure its implementation.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Chiarella? So at this time, I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions that they might have. Mr. Prezioso?
This MECA program that was designed over a year ago, what was the original idea of the program?
The original idea of MECA was to provide a childcare facility for district employees that would encourage teachers to return to work sooner based on those who had indicated that they were not able to return to work because of affordable childcare. The intent of that at the time was, and we still experience that frankly, is that when a teacher is out and exercises his or her right to the full-year leave, we are paying that teacher's salary, assuming that they have the sick time available, and the salary, the full-time salary benefits of his or her replacement teacher. So for each teacher that came back, we were saving, in addition to what the tuition generated, we were saving the cost of about $54,000, assuming it was a beginning teacher in Bennys.
Okay. Why are we adding another program, a brand-new program into this MECA program? Is it because it's failing, it doesn't, it's not sustaining itself, we have to add another program and more kids?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me where the MECA and the enrichment programs are going to be housed?
At the Mill Lake School Annex.
Okay. What was that building used for before?
It housed the special services staff.
Okay. And where is the special services staff, where do they reside now?
They are at the Apple Garth trailer.
Okay. Michael, how much do we pay for mortgage and rent on those trailers?
I believe that the Apple Garth trailers are between $16,000 and $17,000 a month lease payment.
Okay. So in other words, we moved staff that works for the school, we moved them out of a building we own, and we put them in a trailer that we have to rent, so we could put this MECA program, where I was told that it wasn't going to cost the public a dime or the Board of Ed a dime. Now we're paying $16,000 a month for a program that's failing. Social Services is in that trailer right now, and we pay a lease or rental fee, $16,000 a month. Another question would be if the enrollment of this program, MECA, is at capacity because of the enrichment program, and a teacher that just had her child wants to use this MECA program, how's that going to help her get back to her job early if there are no openings? Doesn't that defeat the whole purpose? What we're doing really is, we're making a full-day kindergarten program, which the voters voted down, two to one, the last time we had a vote. Now, I know it's a half-day on one part and another half-day, but two half-days make a whole to me. I think this is just another way of getting a kindergarten program kicked off, because now, it's not for the teachers anymore, it's for kindergarten kids. And the original idea of this program was to help the teachers. And this is not going to help the teachers. Not only is it not going to help the teachers, the taxpayers footing a bill $16,000 a month to house the employees that were in our building to begin with. And another thing, teachers are going to pay $850 a month on an average to have her child there, while the enrichment program's only going to pay $400 a month. Doesn't make sense why a teacher would pay $850 while somebody else is paying $400. They're not going to sign up. So it's going to deter a lot of teachers from signing. And I'm really surprised that the Finance Committee, this was presented to us, and in five minutes, the presentation was, no debate, let's just get on with it, and was no investigating, none whatsoever, no thought of how much it was going to cost us to house those kids in that building. And right now, we have two board members missing, and we're going to vote on a proposal to add more money into that program. I think we should table this and really discuss what we're trying to do here. I just feel that we're expanding so much when we should think of the future. We're going to be stuck for a lot of money in the future, and we can't afford to do this.
Ms. Antelis?
If I may, I'll answer the question that was embedded in your comments. If a teacher was to have a baby and wanted to utilize MECA, they would still be able to do that, because that baby would go in the infant room, and the preschool-age kindergarten program would not occupy those rooms, so there would still be room for that. So the initial purpose of MECA would still be able to be accommodated in that case. So I just wanted to answer that.
Ms. Antelis?
I'll talk a little bit about childcare.
What about the bill?
Ms. Antelis has the floor. Many years ago, when the BASK program first started, I remember it took about three years for it to fill up. At this time, I believe people, children are locked out of it. We have more housing going up. We have, I was told, Ken, you were at the meeting, what did they tell you about the 95 children and how many units?
The total, yeah, the total.
About 95, more childcare. So BASK came in, and they're running this great program, and kids are signing up, and they're making lots and lots of money, and every year, we're saying to BASK, gee, you're using our school, you're using our buses, how about giving us some money? No, wouldn't give us any money. Finally, when regulations came around, and we were able to take over childcare, and BASK got a little nervous and came to our meeting and rallied the parents, entered into negotiations with Mr. Gorski and Dr. Hamilton, and agreed to pay us $100,000 a year. Now, if they can afford to pay us $100,000 a year, just think of what their profit is. So now we have people from outside of Monroe, running a program in our schools, making probably, without the $100,000, $250,000, $300,000 a year. Wouldn't that be better off in the pockets of the Monroe taxpayers? I believe it would. Now, the parents are going to have an option. You can either, you have a kindergarten child, you can either, after kindergarten, take your child home, if you are able to do that, or you put your child in a childcare program, they have the KRAP, and basically, they go in there and they work with the children. What we're offering, for the same price, is to have children in kindergarten. We already have the curriculum written, we already have the teacher at the program. Why in the world would any parent take the best KRAP over education for their children? There might be some who do, but I don't think they will. This is an educational enrichment program. You see all the schools that have full-day kindergarten? We can't afford it. The voters did vote it down. But now, we're giving the parents a chance to pay for this, and I believe they're going to come, and that's why I support this. And when we're collecting $250,000, $300,000, and the program is made up, I think we'll be hearing a different tune from board members.
Anyone else? Mr. Prezioso?
Well, we were told that it wasn't going to cost the board or the taxpayer a dime, and now I find out that we're paying for trailers, because originally, that was supposed to be used for social services. Not only that, we complain all the time about how many kids are coming in, how many more people, how many more children we're going to have to take care of in the future. That building could be used for something constructive. We don't need to start a babysitting service, or even a kindergarten service, don't get me wrong, that's a good idea, kindergarten service. We can't do that right now. In the future, this 2% cap is not going to support this school system. We're not thinking of the future. We're expanding, we have the BASK program that does this already, we shouldn't be going into another business. We can't do it.
I disagree. Because what you're saying is, yes, more children are coming, we are not getting any more money from the state, and we better start thinking of some real creative ways to start bringing revenue back into the district and off of the back of the taxpayers. If we could collect $350,000 a year in profit, two years, we have a roof.
Mr. Prezioso?
Can I ask why we weren't told about social services moving to another building, and we were paying rent because they were taking up our space for MECA?
We all knew that.
No. Originally, that building was used for social services or could have been used for anything.
Well, the trailer is also...
We moved social services over to the trailers, and we're paying a monster rental for that trailer, and now, we're responsible for that. That should be part of the MECA.
The trailers...
MECA could have been put in there instead of our school, our district.
The trailers, the reason we selected the annex was because it was already outfitted to have the appropriate-sized toilet rooms, the toilet rooms in every classroom, it was an ideal location. The trailers are not just utilized for pupil personnel services, it's also our professional development center as well. So the trailers would be operated, even if special services weren't there, we would still need the trailers for that space. And it is not true that the board was not aware that the pupil personnel services was moving to the trailer, that was fully vetted with the board.
And I believe pupil personnels moved at least three times.
Yes.
Around this district, because we haven't found a true home for them yet, and we are doing that, we are looking for a home. And also, the trailers that we are renting, we have a rental agreement, and we still have two years left on that rental agreement, so we don't want to keep them empty. Anyone else? Mr. Prezioso?
My last statement would be, this is basically a childcare kindergarten program, and the voters had told you they don't like that idea. They're the taxpayers. We're supposed to set an example, we're supposed to be representing them and the children. Those childrens could stay home and let the families take care of them. We're not responsible for them. We shouldn't be taking care of them. We don't have the money to take care of them. We got problems in the high school that we should be addressing, but we're not. We're concentrating on MECA and a daycare center. I'd like to know why 770 kids were suspended, or, not suspended, what's that word? You had problems, you have a lot of problems in the high school, and I think we should address things like that before we open up a babysitting service.
Just quick point of clarification. The difference between this and what the voters voted down was that was a fully-funded, tax-funded program. This one will be funded by the people that are taking advantage of the program. That's the difference that we seem to be glossing over here.
I think we also see, too, that there are parents who have their children in our kindergarten program for a half a day, and then they look for an outside place to put their kindergarten children in, a half-day kindergarten. There are also kindergarten parents who take their kids out of our kindergarten totally and then bring them back in first grade. If we can keep them in Monroe and teach them what we're learning to get them acclimated into first grade, it's only going to help all of our students.
I also have the school report card from the Board of Education. It says here, we have 770 number of students suspended in Monroe Township High School.
I'd like to see that report you're referring to, that could not possibly be accurate.
And Mr. Tesler?
Just a couple of things for clarification. Correct me if I'm wrong, the MECA program started, when we, okay, the MECA program started, or we started investigating it last year as a way to, one, make a profit, make some extra money to help with the tax relief, and we were trying to think out of the box and try to come up with new revenue streams, since we weren't getting it from the state and other sources. It's also a way to provide a service for the teachers, for the children, and it's, in my mind, it was always supposed to be a way to make a profit. As I know, other people, once you start a new business, the first year or so, you may not make a profit. I think we got off to a little rocky start, we started advertising a little late, and we ended up with only 15 or 17 children the first year. What I'd like to know, I guess, is as of now, what are the enrollments numbers for next year? As of now, I know it's probably still growing. And also, what's the projected enrollment, and an idea of the kindergarten enrichment, and what, how many students would be enrolled to give at least break even next year or make a profit so we can start repaying back the loan? And my second thing is, is I think what Kathy already touched upon, maybe Mike can clarify this for clarification, the trailers at Apple Garth are, we're under contract for a few more years, so regardless of what we're doing, we still have to pay for them, and I bet in a few more years, with the growth, we'll probably need them for students eventually, and I guess pupil personnel services will be moving again. And also, if I do support this, I would like to have a monthly report, like we have enrollment report every month for the district enrollment of the kindergarten program and the MECA program as part of the Superintendent's report, and also a regular report on the profit and loss as part of the program. And if I do support this this time, if the program doesn't at least break even or turn a profit in one more year, I don't think I will support it again.
To answer your question, these numbers are raw. Right now, there are 23 students registered in, from MECA in September, and that number is, we anticipate that number will continue to increase, and our break-even number is 34, 41 in total between both programs. And the number of students who have expressed interest in the... And the number of students who have expressed interest in the early enrichment program is 40, 75 students have expressed interest. Now, expressed interest is different than bringing a deposit, but 75 students have, parents have expressed interest.
Okay, what are we, what are we doing to advertise, or if this gets approved tonight, what are our methodologies for advertising to the parents? How are we gonna approach that?
For the kindergarten program.
Can you please use some news?
One, we would design a letter to send home, obviously, to all the registered families. I think it would be necessary to have a parent information night, so they could come here, you know, get the program explained to them, you know, kind of like an open house, to see what we're doing, you know, different ways to get it, and of course, maybe something on the website, or even the Alert Now is the telephone.
And central registration.
And, you know, what Marietta and Shari at Central Registration.
Right, as they come in to register, our kindergarten students, they would receive that information, just as they do for our preschool integrated program. So we hand that out, and this is perfect. Look at we're advertising right now as we speak. That's how we'll do that. It'll be word of mouth, and we will continue to advertise.
Yeah, 'cause I, with our, with our customer base of over, the number of students we have and staff, we have about 1,000 staff, and obviously, all those students, I just can't see why, as long as we advertise, advertise it properly, manage it properly, that we can't, you know, run this business well and make a profit.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes. Hello. I just have a question regarding the capacity for housing the students. So for instance, let's, how many students would we be able to fit in this program? Because we're all worried about not having enough students, but what happens if we have too many? I mean, or is there a point where we would exceed our ability to hold them?
If this information was presented to our finance committee-
Please use the microphone.
Okay, I will. And I would like to look at you, too, so you don't mind my back, right? It was presented to the finance committee, and with collaboration with Dr. Hamilton and Sharon and myself, we did take a look. There are two rooms that are empty right now that can be utilized for these kindergarten students that we're speaking. So if we look at possibly somewhere between 18 to 20 students in each room, and in four different sections, we're looking close to 80 students at this time.
The capacity for the building is 100 students, though.
That's-
Mr. Masters?
With no additional staff, or we'd have to-
If we had 100 kids in there, we would need, we would need some more staff.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, just to add on to what Ken was saying, 'cause I, he and I were thinking about the same thing, thanks for asking the question. With the functional capacity of about 100 or so students, and you're co-mingling two different programs, I may be the odd man out here, but we need to start thinking about overcapacity, because as the enrichment program starts to take hold, and the word gets out that, you know, that's now a viable option for children, that, or for parents who want to pay for that additional time spent within district, which, as was mentioned earlier, was, by Lou, exactly the opposite of what the voters voted against. I think we really need to think about, you know, would there be capacity to expand the annex on site where it is, or what are we gonna do when, a couple of things happen, it really takes hold, and I know we've spoken about this at a couple of board meetings, if at some point in the future we decide to take BASK over, how will that cascade across the district? Because now we'd have the BASK, early enrichment, and MECA, and managing the priorities to make sure that, you know, MECA was, its original intent was to help the staff members to keep that in focus, because I think, as Ken mentioned, once two of them start co-mingling in the same building, if MECA starts to actually gain a lot of popularity with our staff, and they were the original priority, and we now have both programs in the same building, running at the same time, we're gonna have two issues, capacity and logistics of getting kids in and out, because the enrichment would require transportation at some point for the kids getting from the school they're in to the annex, from wherever. So, future for thought.
We've actually anticipated that. We do have a contingency plan. The enrollment, the kindergarten enrollment right now at Mill Lake is lower than it usually is this time of year. We're kinda sitting on that and watching for those late enrollees, and that may not develop until maybe even August. But if we needed to, we would probably have space at Mill Lake that we could house part of the enrichment program if we needed to, that's one. And two, we'd use a lottery, which is a lot, what a lot of the other programs do when they aren't out of space for the number of students that require it, which would be a good problem to have. And then, lastly, make this a part of the demographic study that we're looking at, if that's a different population that we're trying to seek.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Masters?
Just clarification again, what was the break-even, the break-even points?
The break-even for, Mike just gave me these numbers, so I was gonna correct this. The MECA program is, you have 24?
For the MECA program, the break-even enrollment, the projected number of students next year is 24. So assuming 24, based upon that projection, you would need 41 students participating in the enrichment program to break even.
So that would be 20 a.m., 20 p.m., or some combination thereof.
Any, anyone else from, Mr. Presiosso?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can you second that, 'cause-
I don't believe so. I believe, I believe, based upon the legal advice that the Jamesburg representative was to be excluded on this particular agenda item, that to table this item would also be-
Since there is no second, motion is denied. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? Then, Mr. Tesler?
Tesler.
Just real quick, if, I don't know if there's any of the teachers here who just happen to have any of their kids in the program, and if they, if they would like to make any comments in public form, I know I would personally like to hear from them.
Is that okay, Ken?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yes.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hi, my name's Dawn Marie Cappas, I'm 21 Avenue H, here in Monroe. A few moments ago, I stood here before you as Oak Tree's Teacher of the Year. I stand before you now as a mother of two small children who attend MECA. I'd like to start by saying thank you. Thank you for offering district employees a loving and caring school for our children to attend, which gives us peace of mind as we take care of and teach the children of those in our town. I have heard the questions and concerns at the board meetings from the public, it's not making enough money, was it the right decision? Who are the teachers who use it? And hope that tonight I can help you to see MECA through the eyes of a devoted parent, who is also a devoted teacher in our district. Our two boys have had a wonderful experience at MECA. Our one-year-old is cared for and loved by his teachers. They give helpful advice, find enjoyment in his accomplishments, and comfort him when he's not feeling his best. Our oldest is in the preschool program, and he is also cared for and loved by his teacher. She utilizes the high-scope curriculum, which you heard about this evening, and I'm amazed at all that he has learned this year, and it's evident by the things he says at home, such as recognizing and writing his letters, numbers, writing his name, participating in activities related to music, art, and science. His teacher is kind and considerate, and always willing to help or give suggestions. The preschool class has also participated in some Mill Lake activities, such as attending a fire assembly and Toys for Tots. Thank you to Dr. Barberi for helping to create that partnership. I look forward to the day when our children will attend Mill Lake as kindergartners, and if he was entering kindergarten in September, I would be the first one to sign up for what you're proposing tonight. I'm telling you this so that the public can hopefully see what a blessing it has been to us, and that the MECA staff are teachers who support the learning styles of the children who attend, whether that be a four-year-old learning letter sounds, or a 12-month-old learning to walk. They are anything but glorified babysitters, and I cannot stress that enough. I understand the public's desire to see it at capacity and making money, and I appreciate our board president letting the public know at the April meeting that, yes, parents do have to put down deposits in the spring to secure their spot for the fall. And since Sharon, MECA's director, wasn't hired until July, that happened to several parents who may have otherwise enrolled their child in MECA. However, as teachers who attend MECA began to spread the word about the wonderful things happening there, enrollment did begin to grow. Sharon Palazzo, a special education teacher at Oak Tree, enrolled her son after returning from maternity leave in January. Sunny DiMarco, a fifth-grade teacher at Applegarth, loved her visit to MECA so much and heard the wonderful things teachers had to say about it. She took her daughter out of Bright Horizons in February so she could start at MECA, and I did have permission from both to let you know that, who, they could not be here tonight. Both are very happy they did. We agree that we don't know what we would do if it closed. We strongly feel that we wouldn't find the same compassion and commitment to our children at another daycare provider. Our oldest was at another daycare last year, and we are thrilled with our experience at MECA, and are so happy we made the change. Both of our children will be there again in September, and we would highly recommend it to other families.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there any more comments or questions from the, Mr. Lehman?
Adam Lehman, 16 Eddington Lane, principal at Woodland Elementary School. My son, he's four and a half, his name's Sam, and we actually sent him to the program starting in January. We took a leap of faith. We kinda wanted to see how things shaped out at the beginning of the school year, had a really good reputation. My wife and I, clearly both educators, and the number-one priority for us was a quality program with people we could trust. He's our precious commodity, and we wouldn't leave him in the hands of anybody else that we wouldn't, we didn't have faith in. And we took a tour, we had a great feeling, and leading up to, and from his previous experience, he didn't want to go to preschool, he didn't want to go to daycare. We took him in that building, he, we could barely hold on to him, he was so excited, he started playing with the students that were there, and, you know, since then, he gets up in the morning, wants to go to school. When he gets home from school, all he talks about is when does he get to go back? So, we put our deposit down for next year, we're excited about it, and he's not ready for kindergarten yet, but hopefully, two years from now, we'll have an option to, you know, send him to full-day K, or send him to the kindergarten enrichment program, and that would be outstanding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more comments from the, before I open it up to the public?
I just kinda wonder, Tom Note Stein, 15 Nathaniel Street, why was it, why are these people speaking if it's not open to the public?
Mr. Tesler asked-
Since when does Mr. Tesler can call up public people-
He asked if it was okay, and I said yes, and I'm asking you to-
In promoting something you didn't vote on yet?
I'm asking you to please take your seat until I open it up to the public.
This is unbelievable. Obviously, he's made up his mind, he's called up people to support this. This is a travesty.
No, that wasn't planned. It was not.
Doesn't, any other board members have any comments or questions? And before I open it up to the public, I just want to say again, and I've said this for many months, we did not open this until July because we could not find a director that we thought was appropriate for this facility. And we finally found a phenomenal director, and is doing a phenomenal job. So sometimes it just, you kind of go off the road a little bit until you get the right people in place, and then you can have the program. You can have the program with the wrong people, and then it's not gonna work. So we decided to get the right people and then have our program work, and it's been growing. So now, at this time, I will open it up to the public for any comments or questions. We will adhere to our three-minute comments. So if anybody'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Mel Waller. I live at Regency at Monroe. I don't think the street address is of particular importance. Mr. Hamilton, you mentioned that there was 43 children necessary to break even. Then later on, you mentioned 20 and 22, and I'm saying to myself, well, already I have a difference. Not only is there a difference to the break even, I'm wondering, what is the cost per student? And at what point will we be making any money? That's what I'm interested in. I've been in business my entire career, thank goodness I don't have to do it anymore. There should be a cushion for a reserve because of the fact that there would be, a number of items would come about that we never planned on, and this would be over and above the break even per child. That's what I'm interested in, dollars and cents. I'm not into, to have to go in and we have to pay for other buildings, trailers, as Mr. Presiosso mentioned. We get a little bit disgusted hearing about all these additional monies that we have to pay for, but no one has come out and said how much it will cost for each student in the program.
The tuition rate varies depending on how many days a student is there. So for example, a full-time student would, the parent of a full-time student would pay more than a child that's there three days, and there's a scale that goes five days, four days, three days, two days, halftime, or any kind of modified schedule. So it ranges, the most apparent place for the MECA program is $875.
Yeah, before, before you mentioned eight, 850, and then you mentioned 400, now it's 875.
No, I didn't, I didn't mention 850, I don't know where that would've come from.
But it came out, right, someone here mentioned it, I didn't pull that out of thin air.
The $400 is what the proposed rate would be for the kids in the enrichment program, that's separate from, from MECA.
Okay, again-
That would be the same for any youngster that's five days, that's a full-time rate, that would be 400, the proposed rate is $400.
Okay.
For the MECA program, it varies depending on the number of days that the student is in the program.
Okay, again, I go back to one point, and that is, how much would it cost us per child? And no one here has come out, said anything about that. Thank you.
Well, you wanna calculate that real quick? No?
Anyone else from the public?
Al Klein, 53 Turnberry. Please let me know when I have a minute left. I'm using Klein instead of Smith this time. First of all, I want to congratulate all the teachers that won the awards, they are deserving of it. The two that spoke, the principal, Adam Lehman, and the teacher, in other words, they're satisfied paying $875 a student, or child, in which case, the principal, not the principal, the teacher had two children, that she's paying 816, 1750 a month for the two kids, then you're gonna have the enrichment kids come in for $400. I just want to bring up, if you remember the committee meeting we had when I was on the board, and I told everyone that was on the board in that committee that my daughter took part in Stewartsville, where her cost went from $1,100 a month per student in private daycare to $600, $550 or $600. What you find, in those with young children, when they get used to a program and a teacher, and it's gonna cost them $1,100 versus 875, they'll pay the additional and not disturb the child in the, in the school that he's in now. But if you came in and you started the program at 600 or 650, I'm sure, even though it started late, and we know it started late, you would've gotten many, many more signing up. But at 875, they're gonna stay where they were. Just a few fast questions, if I may. Will this cut into the BASK program at all?
It's conceivable.
Okay. They're giving us $100,000 now. Ms. Ann Tillis brought up at one of the meetings that she wanted to have our own BASK program, and we decided not to, because you got a winning program, everybody is happy with it, why start our own? And now we're gonna revert back to go back on what-
You have one minute.
One minute, that's fast?
Yes.
Okay. How are we gonna transport these kids to Mill Lake? Okay? The more kids you have, the more personnel you need. And then, as far as Mill Lake, this is my last comment, as far as Mill Lake, you're saying we don't have enough students there now, all your building is going on in the south. You're gonna have to do redistricting, which we never did, even though we did a study, for God knows how much money. Those kids are gonna have to be redistricted. So that means Mill Lake, within the next two years, will probably be overcapacity. Thank you very much for not yelling at me.
You have 22 seconds, if you'd like to use them.
Are you, then you owe me two seconds for later.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any answers to his comments?
No? Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Mike Bono, 38 Crenshaw. I just have a few questions I want to clear up. First of all, what just was said, is there gonna be, and who's gonna pay for busing? These kids are not gonna walk over by themselves, they're gonna have to be transported. Now, a hidden cost is gonna be busing. Also, if you're putting 20 kids per teacher, are these teachers all licensed in early education? And are we paying them union wages for two or three hours? Finally- Finally, which is very confusing, how do you enrich a kindergarten kid? What are you gonna teach them, how to draw a line? If you were talking about third graders who had problems with math or science, and you wanted to use this time to enrich them, fine. You're talking about babysitting that's masked as an enrichment program. I can't understand for the life of me how you're gonna enrich a five-year-old. In what field? Math, science, aerodynamics? What field are you gonna deal with these kids? So, before you vote on this thing and hit the taxpayers again, be kind, guys. This is not an ATM machine. We can't keep funding, they're all very worthy programs, all very worthy causes, they're wonderful, but they all cost money. And what business in the world keeps losing money while in business? Sooner or later, you gotta say uncle, and you gotta close these things down. Now, if we're walking on a thread normally, why do we want to put this other elephant on our back, not knowing how many kids we're gonna get into the program? Now, you get a bunch of kids, more teachers, more space, more rental, and how do you tell them you can't come in if you already have 40 kids in the program? There's some unintended consequences going on here, people, that you gotta think about before you invest more money. Thank you.
Do you wanna address the BASK, do you wanna address the BASK?
Yes. Both. Mike, you wanna take the busing piece, and I'll take the?
The busing piece is the.
They're already being bused.
Preschool, kindergarten.
Yeah.
Preschool program.
Enrichment, yes. Well, in essence, I'll respond to, I'll take it, Mike. The busing, the students are already being bused. If anything, this would actually probably consolidate some of the busing, because instead of taking them to various places, they would go from the school where their house, or whichever portion of kindergarten they're in, whether it's the AM or PM, to the Mill Lake annex. So, we're busing them anyway, so there's no additional or hidden costs there. In terms of union wages, the teachers, staff there is, either have been or will be trained in Highscope, the curriculum for Highscope, and they are not paid union wages, they are represented as non-affiliate staff members at this juncture, so they are not covered by a negotiated agreement.
Excuse me, Mr., Dr. Hamilton has the floor.
That's, that's it.
Did you wanna talk? Excuse me, if you'd like to make a comment, you can come to the microphone, because I still, you have, how much time did he have?
I don't know any longer.
I'll give him like, I think he had like 47 seconds.
By state law, you must have a licensed teacher in that age group, in that class, in that grade. If you have kindergarten students, you must have a licensed early education teacher in that room. Now, she could have 47 parents, but there must be one licensed teacher. Now, if you're gonna run 20 kids to the class, you're gonna need licensed teachers, or you're gonna be violation of the law.
That's, that's not.
How are you getting around that? By waving a flag and saying, "We don't need licensed teachers"?
Well, we actually don't, sir. That's not, in that particular program, that is not, the certification is not required. The training that we are providing for the Highscope curriculum is actually even above what we're, we're required to do, frankly.
God bless you, good luck with that. If a kid gets hurt in that class, good luck with that.
My name is Jay Sincoff, I'm a certified public accountant and a CGMA. I'd like to thank Dr. Hamilton for having Mr. Gorsky send me the information I requested so quickly and promptly. From looking over the information and talking over the situation myself, I think most probably the program was started improperly and ineptly at the start, all right? Dealing with proper marketing and acquisition of information of the demographics. Now that it's in place, all right, according to the information, all right, we've already put in about $300,000 into the project. Now, we can look at this as an opportunity cost or an opportunity future profit. Personally, I would not like to throw out $300,000 of my tax money that has already been spent. I myself, right now, did last year a plan for a pre-K, three to five-year-olds in Brooklyn of a school, they'll have 120 kids. Profitability was somewhere in the neighborhood of $425,000. So, I look at it this way, we've already put X amount of, over 300,000, about $250,000 into this project, why throw it out? All right? Let's go for profitability, all right? And make it something that will work and function, all right? And do it properly, according to good marketing criteria. Dealing with the prior gentleman, my wife, by the way, is a teacher of three and four-year-olds in the city of Elizabeth. She has her bachelor's and a master's plus 30. The work that she does, besides teaching the kids six hours, she puts in another four to, three to five hours every other day, making up plans. She's also used Highscope, so is my other daughter, who's a special ed teacher, who graduated here through the special ed program since, since she was five years old. So, the education here and everything is excellent, as being a resident of this town for about 27 years. I know, since three of my four kids have all went to the Monroe schools. I don't consider my wife to be a professional babysitter. I think your assumption of what a babysitter is may go back to the 1910s.
Sir, sir, could you please address the board?
All right. At that time, and the way the demographics are today, people cannot use grandparents.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Tom Notstein, 15 Nathaniel Street. I actually think that this has some, a potential. I am almost like Mr. Sincoff in that respect. However, I don't have anybody on this board that is capable of running a business, and that, correct me if I'm wrong, is the goal for this. We are going to run this as a business. Has anybody created a business plan? I'm sure the answer is no. That's one of the most important things that a business needs when you first start up. Has anybody looked, I know with the finance committee, it was mentioned, there was only 15 students. The comment was made, well, we've committed to these 15 students, we need to say, this will go on next year, no matter how many students we have, even if eight people were to drop out, or all of them drop out, we were gonna run the program for one person because we made a commitment to these people. Well, in a business, you don't look at those type of commitments, you have to say, the bottom line is the commitment. And I don't see that here. I think that in order for this to be successful, we have to take off our educators' hats, and we have to put on a business outfit. And think of this as what you want it to be is a profitable business, where the profit is the most important thing, providing a good service is equally as important. But all I see here, and it's kinda like we run our taxes, it's just all about spending. We don't really give thought to the revenue, and that is in a business of prime importance. So, I think that if, obviously this is a done deal, I can see it already just for the fact that we couldn't even get a second on tabling it until two other members are here. So, obviously, this is a done deal, but I would hope that maybe some member of the board could make a motion and say, "Let's give this a sunsetting clause." Or, let's say, after one year, if we don't have X amount of profit, that we're gonna just say, "We have to cut our losses," because any business has that built into it, where you know, this is where we're gonna be, this is where we're gonna cut our losses. Unfortunately, the board has unlimited revenues because they can just keep borrowing from the taxpayers, and that is not a good business plan. So, I urge everyone on this board to, I like the idea we're thinking outside the box. In this day and age, that's precisely where we need to be, but we also need to think of the repercussions down the road and just say, maybe we need to just give this another month, another finance committing meeting, to give it some real thought, write up that business plan. We have great mission statements and everything, but that's not nearly as important as a business plan if it's gonna be run as a business. So, all I can say is, it's definitely got some potential, but I think that to jump into this willy-nilly like, like I see happening is not the way to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alan Khan, 11 Crenshaw Court. I was at the finance meeting the other night, and of course, there was no comment from the public there, but I was appalled at what I heard. You described this program, I think with 17 children is the current enrollment, cost so far about $280,000. Revenue, 70-something plus, a loss of over $200,000. And the recommendation from the superintendent to the director of the program was, "Go recruit some kids." It sounded to me like you were using the students in our kindergarten program to save a failed program. Go talk to parents. Tell them what a wonderful program we're going to have, not that we have, but that we're going to have, let's save this failed program. This program utilizes five classrooms now. At the planning board meetings, at the town council meetings, you all know that we've got loads of kids coming in. You're gonna be coming to us for another building, five classrooms? Another 100 kids coming in could be served utilizing five classrooms. I think this is the wrong way to go at this point, to start a new program, and I cannot believe that you wouldn't even put it off another month to think about this. I think you're wrong.
Anyone else from the public?
Lester 44, Avenue Y. It seems the purpose is that we're going, our purpose is to put out the BASK program as it is now, and it seems to be working, and you're gonna do that by taking away all their profits, by taking out the kindergartners. Once you do that, you're gonna eliminate them, and then we're gonna have to worry about the before and after-school children that are above the kindergarten level. And then what's gonna happen to that? We're gonna have to hire teachers for before and after, for, you know, children that go in the before and after program above the kindergarten level. And also, in the BASK program, I believe at Oak Tree and Barkley Brook, the KRAP is located at those schools, so now you're gonna have to bus those children over to Mill Lake, so that'll be additional busing there also. And also, I have a question about the infant care, too. You said, I don't know how many infants you're planning on enrolling, I don't know, I used to be a nursing. I don't know what the capacity is per room, but I believe by state law, like cribs, you have to keep them a certain distance, perhaps a preschool teacher knows that, so you might need like an additional room for infants just based on state law by spacing of cribs and things like that.
We do. We are not bound by those, those guidelines, but they do serve as a standard to help us create a program that is competitive for those programs that we are competing against. So, there are guidelines that we do follow in terms of the number of cribs that can be in the infant room.
Okay, so you might need if, more than one room, I'm just, I was at the finance meeting, and you only have five rooms, so I'm saying that might entail an additional room right there.
I don't, I don't know what the projected infant number is for September.
Okay, and how about the, okay, and how about the additional busing that you'd have to take the, from their area, which means the parents would have to go over by the Mill Lake area, and I'm sure those children would be just more comfortable in their own school because KRAP has always been in their schools.
Well, if they're, if they're in the program where they're being transported out anyway into another provider, that, they're being transported anyway, so.
Well, that was only if they're going to after care for the BASK at Mill Lake, that was, that's an if.
Right, if they're being transported, although, if they wouldn't be ordinarily transported, they still wouldn't be.
And what about if you run them out of business? Then we're gonna be in the business of after care and before care for children above kindergarten level, now we're talking about more teachers there also. That, that's, that's getting into flex care, we're talking about parents say, if you're a nurse, you have to be in, I know, like you have to drop them off at 6:30 in the morning, that gets very complicated, because they're very flexible at BASK.
Well, Mrs. Lester, that would be a great problem to have, because that would mean more money for our taxpayers.
It would also mean hiring a lot of people. And what about, you know, sometimes parents are late, the teachers have to stay, that requires extra salary also, a lot of times, and they, and these kind of private places that, you know, you'd have to charge for that, you'd have to figure that out, a lot of times, parents are late. Now, we're getting into, you know, parents coming in from the city, they didn't make it back till 7 o'clock, who's gonna stay there?
We deal with that right now, every day.
I don't, not on a regular, parents are working every day, maybe for sports and things like that.
It is not at all unusual for a principal to have to stay behind because a parent is delayed for various reasons. That's not at all unusual.
Okay, and, and I would also like to say, I agree with everybody, because I was at the financial committee meeting when Mr. Preziosso asked for a cost study. You're asking for over $62,000 more, and you don't even know if you're competitive on your tuition rates, anything, you have no cost study, and you're asking for more money. I, I just, I just don't think that's fair without a cost study. I agree with everyone else who's been up here.
And Mrs. Lester, that's not true. We have surveyed all the other providers, and we've set our price to be as competitive as possible, so we have done our research.
On your pie diagram circle?
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Just one more thing? You said that they're interested? Interested does not mean you have a check in hand.
Anyone else from the public?
Krista Shai, 8 Foreman Avenue. I just have a quick question. I was under the impression that BASK was under contract for three years, so any subject of taking over would kind of be stopped for the, the next three years. So, I'm a little bit confused why this is being brought up now when we're only one year into the contract?
Are we, oh, Mr. Gorsky?
Dr. Hamilton and I raised that question to the board attorney today, who felt that it was not restricted for the board to engage in the enrichment program under the current terms of the contract.
So, then what is this discussion about?
I said it was not restricted, meaning that the board, yes.
Oh, it's not? So, then what was the point of the contract that we settled on last year?
Well, there's certainly still a lot of services that are provided by the contract that the board is not engaging in. The kindergarten wraparound program is one part of it.
It's a huge part of it.
Well, it gives, it gives parents another option. There are a lot of people who might want to keep their kids in kindergarten or KRAP. There might be other parents who want the enrichment program. So, our BASK program, we're not looking to get rid of the BASK, we had a three-year contract we signed with them. We still, I believe, have two years to go with them.
We do.
We're gonna honor that contract.
But KRAP is part of BASK.
Yes, we know that. It just gives parents another option.
Okay, and I just hope you realize, KRAP is also an enrichment program, and last year I spoke, and I welcomed everyone to come to my program, and Mr. Klein was the only one who showed up, came to see what we do there. So, I welcome you all again to see what I do at my program. And there was one other, oh, and just to clarify, yes, it's an outside program, but we are all Monroe residents who work there, just to clarify that. And we have children who go to the Monroe schools, and we care about the students just like you all do, and we're the outsiders, but really not. Thank you.
Nelson Chen, 4 Ashley Court. Mecca as it was designed is a failure. The program was designed to benefit teachers and would allegedly come, who would allegedly come back early from maternity and paternity leave, and therefore save the district money. The only problem was that the teachers did not sign up for the program, and you cannot bring yourselves to admit it was a failure. So, you have redesigned Mecca to be an all-day kindergarten. This is nothing more than childcare. Why is the school involved in a private enterprise? There is already an alternative in place, as you just heard, KRAP and BASK, which will be, which you will be competing against, and now maybe opening yourselves up to some litigation because there is a contract in place, a real private enterprise. The school should be educating children, not providing daycare. You're only doing this with the hope of recovering all the taxpayers' money that you have already lost on Mecca. $265,000 with this proposal of an additional $65,000. You say there is no, that there is no cost to the program, to the taxpayers, yet you continue to borrow money from the taxpayers that should be used for school-aged children, not a daycare center you obviously do not know how to run. When is this money going to be? When is this money going to be paid back? All we hear are excuses why the program has failed. Was there a plan? Was there a study done? Sure, there were projections at the last finance meeting, but all those projections rely on enrollment. No real actual data. How many deposits have you collected? Let me give you some real data. To date, there's only seventeen and a half children enrolled in the program. Come September, you're saying there will be twenty-four. I hope there's deposits on all those twenty-four. You have stated that the reason for the daycare center was not, was not successful this year was because by May, the parents already know where their children will be enrolled and therefore no longer looking. Well, May is here. So what makes you think that your plan will be successful? If your program doesn't succeed and you are full to capacity, what happens when the teacher has a baby and wants to enroll that child in MECA, but you are full to capacity? Next year, there will be a redistricting study conducted because of all the growth in our town. The growth is creating space issues in our district. We are renting trailers at some schools, and MECA is occupying a whole building on the grounds of Mill Lake with as many as five classrooms. This space should be used for our school-aged children, not to run a daycare center or other programs. You are inventing uses for this space, and within two or three years, you will be coming to the public to vote for the rental of trailers of construction of additional schools. Why isn't this space being utilized for the school-aged children? There have been many unaccounted-for costs involved with MECA as well. Your time, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Gorski's time, Ms. Marietta's time, and other staff members, and the time of the board as well. And that time is forever lost. That time should have been spent on our children.
Thank you.
Bob Zaglarsky. As you know, Board Member Doug Poy is not, could not be here this evening, and he was concerned that his message be passed on to the Board of Education during discussion of the proposed early childhood enrichment program.
Mr. Presiosso, we have a member of the public speaking.
I understand that. Excuse me, Bob.
Excuse me, we have a member of the public speaking. Please, please continue.
Is there a problem?
This is a board member's letter that you should be reading.
Oh, okay. In any event, I wanted to ask a few questions about the, the fact that you're using a building for this program. And you have a special ed department, and most special ed departments across the state are now interested in bringing as many students back into the district from out-of-district placements. My question is, and my concern is, is this program in any way inhibiting the special ed department in, in that regard? Will special ed not be able to bring back students that are in out-of-district placements back to the district because there is no room? And also, would they not be able to, when they do bring back some of these students if they were to do it, and I'm not saying that anyone should or is planning to do that, would they not be able to open up some extra special ed classes that you could charge tuition for and achieve your goal of bringing in some funds from other school districts or outside funds into the school district? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Oh, that's okay. He did not send me a message, so I'm not planning to read a message from Mr. Poy.
Can I have my copy back, please?
Mr. Poy did not tell me to read anything to the, to the public. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on the MECA?
Hi, good evening. My name's Stephen Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. First, I'm extremely glad that I came today because I learned quite a few things that I was unaware of before. That being said, the gentleman's comments brought up the business plan sparked my interest to come up and speak because frankly, I think he was right. And I, and I think you would think he was right also. I'm sitting here listening to a proposed plan expansion of a program that's been failed without even hearing the word pilot. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but shouldn't you be considering a pilot program before going, you know, full force into something new that you don't even know will succeed or how much things would cost? I mean, these are the things I think we need to hear. And Mr. Presiosso, I think, was 100% right in asking for a tabling of this motion. Clearly, two board members are missing, but I think you still have some homework to, to do. Because if you're going to present a program to the public, you better be sure that it's a program that's gonna be successful. We can't afford any more failures. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public?
Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. Again, philosophically, I don't have an objection to this kind of program. However, it seems, and I've said it before, and unfortunately, because we're still discussing it, I have to say it again, it's a pattern of incomplete thought by the board to project what may happen, and we have already some evidence that it hasn't, it's not working yet. So I do still have a couple of questions. When you say projected, and I think Mr. Chen asked the question but didn't get an answer, you have projected 23 for next September. How many deposits do you have? You have 23 deposits, people have paid their deposits. Okay, that's a good thing. Insurance liability, how much is that costing for the program?
Mr. Gorski?
According to our insurance broker, there's a negligible cost when we added the MECA program. It was, he estimated $1,500 annual increase in insurance. I believe the bill came in between 1100 and 1200.
And with infants in the building and, and all that? Okay. And that goes to my other question about how we, we keep changing the language of what's going on. We keep talking about this being an enrichment, it's more of, you know, some people think it's babysitting service, others are saying that it is an enrichment program, you're gonna be teaching the children even at a small level. I'm sure you can teach a three-year-old, five-year-old very good things. I know there's new studies about early education intervention. However, at one point, you're saying, "Well, this enrichment," and the other point, you're saying you're not having certified teachers, and you're not having professionals, you're having paraprofessionals. So you're, you're mixing things up again. We're not getting a clear picture of what's happening. The state standard seems to be higher than what you are going to be proposing. So that scares me as a taxpayer about liability. It really seems, if you're bringing infants into a room, that $1,500 extra a year is not gonna cover any form of liability. The other question is, if BASK has professional teachers, and I don't know what staff they have, but if they're professional teachers, and I'm not always for privatization, I'm a little bit more of, I guess, a socialist than that. But if, if BASK has teachers that we're not paying pensions on and all those kinds of things, then we're, we don't have a future cost to the services that MECA would provide. If we start, the need for professionals and teachers and things, then we're not go, then we're, we're gonna have pensions, we're gonna have benefit liability and all that. So that kind of stuff also should be considered in the cost of these programs. Again, philosophically, I'm not opposed to daycare for children so women can go to work and have professions and, and families, and it helps families. But again, it's not a good, it's not good planning. And we need leadership for good planning, and we need to really stop the, well, if we think it's a good idea, we should just go forward with it. And we, and look, we've, we've incurred millions of dollars of costs with that attitude, not with this program, but in general. So please consider tabling it until we get all our facts.
Thank you.
I'd like to, Mrs. Arminio, I'd like to respond to a couple of things you said there, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. The teachers are not, the staff members there are not represented by a bargaining unit, but they do have a pension. They are district employees, so they, they are eligible for those.
Right.
And there is a certificated teacher on staff. And you're absolutely right, as is Mr. Chen. The catalyst for coming up with an alternative really is about raising the money. It's about creating a mechanism to restore the funds that the district has put out to start up the MECA program. It's an alternative funding source to make it solvent and pay that money back. The MECA program, we need something in the interim. This time next year, this could be a non-issue. MECA may be full to capacity, and it may serve its purpose. But if it does not, the idea, the catalyst for what do we do to restore the money, we had to come up with an alternative, and we think this is a very viable one, and one that will provide a solid educational foundation for our students. And it is an educational program. It is not, what our children are expected to know and be able to do by the time they leave kindergarten will amaze you. Kids are leaving kindergarten reading and writing in full sentences. It is not cut, like you and I may have experienced in kindergarten, color and cut and paste. It's a very different world. And that's what this program is designed to do, truncate those learning experiences. The catalyst for the program was not an ideal scenario, frankly, but I think it created an ideal situation for us to create great opportunities for our kids and, and restore the financial burden to some extent to our taxpayers.
Well, my, my, Michelle, your time is up. I'd just like to say, my objection is, you keep changing, you know, we keep moving the goal, and it's not fair to the taxpayers to keep moving the goal. We were told in January it meant something at that point. Then we were told a few months later it meant something else.
Thank you, Michelle.
All good intentions, but we can't, you owe the people paying the bills a, a clear idea of what we're paying for.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Then at this time, we're gonna close. You've already had an opportunity to speak. Are you speaking on MECA?
Yeah, I am. I just, I just would like you folks, if you're not gonna table it, to at least come to a...
Please give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nelson Chen. I think you all know me by now. Same address.
But the microphone doesn't, so.
Oh, the microphone doesn't? Hello.
Yeah.
In any case, I would like to have a sunset clause for MECA and a commitment from you folks that we don't have to let, you don't have to lend the program any more funds for the next school year.
There's already been a commitment made by the finance committee that we would revisit this again next year earlier than we have this year and, and decide what we want to do for the...
Yeah, but as Michelle said, you keep moving the goal, you keep committing more money to a throwing, throwing, you know, just throwing pots of money into the program. And you owe it to us to at least have a sunset clause on this thing and not commit any more funds to it. I mean, you're reinventing it, you made excuses for it. Here we are again, addressing the same issue we addressed six months ago, you know, when you first started lending it money, and now you're still here in the same place. Make a commitment to the folks sitting here that you're not gonna commit any more funds to it.
Thank you. This, this is gonna be the last comment on MECA, then we have to go through the rest of the agenda.
Tom Notestein, 15 Nathaniel Street. I realize that the finance committee has said they want to revisit this earlier this next time, but what does revisit mean? Anytime we talk about education, we always talk about a metric, something to correlate what we're seeing with the results. What kind of metrics are we gonna use? If we're, if we're down $20,000, is that gonna be good enough? If we're down $100,000, are we gonna cut our losses? What is that criteria gonna be when we revisit this? To say revisit, what does that even mean? Again, these are not business terms that this board is using, because nothing against the board, a requirement to be on the board does not mean you need to know how to run a business. But obviously, there's nobody here that does, because you would never start a business, first of all, by financing heavily. That's the guaranteed way to, to go into a failed business. And secondly, where is your, your, your steps? I mean, if anybody does anything about a business plan, this is not how it's being done. So again, I urge you, come up with some metrics for this revisiting, and more importantly, hold off. What is the rush? Let's not rush into this. It's got some great potential, but not if you rush. So please, I urge you, consider that.
At this time, we have a motion on the floor. Amy, if you'd like to read the motion again. And it's already been seconded.
Madam President?
I'm gonna have Ms. Antellus read the motion.
It is recommended by the finance committee that the Board of Education approve the early childhood enrichment program to operate in conjunction with MECA at a monthly rate of $400 per student for a full-time program, effective September 1st, 2013, and to authorize the superintendent and the business administrator, board secretary, to take the necessary steps to ensure its implementation.
Are there any further comments or questions by board members? Mr. Tesler?
Well, he was first.
That's okay, Mr. Tesler.
I would like to maybe have a quick discussion on a, on a clause saying that as of maybe the December board meeting, if we're not making, if we're not break even or making a certain profit, that we are gonna send out the program. I don't know if we have to amend the, the motion or the, the proper way to do that, but I would like to be, somehow incorporate that in this.
Make it a separate one. That would be a separate motion?
Okay.
Before you do that, maybe at the next finance meeting, why don't we start to formulate a business plan, start to talk about, you know, timelines, money, and that kind of thing? I don't think we need a motion. I think we can discuss it at finance.
Well, I, I think we said every month at finance, we needed an update from the administration as to where we are that would be able...
What I would like to see is, maybe I'll just direct the finance committee at your next meeting to bring back at the next board of ed meeting, that, that concrete plan and information saying that, you know, here's the plan. If we're not making a profit by this date, by the end of the year, then, you know, the next school year will be, we'll terminate the program, or if we're making a great profit, then fantastic. But I would like to...
We'll do that at our monthly finance meetings, and we'll have, make sure that there's a, an item on the board agenda every month to, to update everything, even if it's done through Ms. Antellus's committee reports.
That's fine. I would just like to see that concrete numbers at the next June board meeting.
Mr. Presiosso, did you have a question?
I received a statement from Doug Poy asking me if you would read it.
He did not send me anything?
Okay, I, I will be happy to read it. This is a message from Doug Poy.
I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for us to do that.
Another board member who's absent.
Well, unfortunately, there's always a board member who's absent from our meetings, and if he wanted me to read something, he could have sent it to me, and he didn't send me anything to read. So at this time, we'll have a roll call.
Now, I have a problem. If we're going to, I guess, wait until the next finance meeting to come up with some sort of plan and add additional sunset clause, I have a bigger issue with this now. I, I agree with Mr. Presiosso. I think we should table it till the next meeting.
Can you just explain why? I'm not quite understanding why you wanna table it all of a sudden.
If, exactly, if we're gonna wait till the next finance meeting, which I'm on, and I thought we had a really good discussion contrary to what Mr. Presiosso said at the last meeting about this, but bringing up sunset clauses and discussing these at the next meeting and a business plan, and then agreeing that we are gonna factor those into our decision, to me, that seems like we don't have all the information now, and we should wait.
Well, one of the, Mr. Chiro?
I just wanna, I, I know Mr. Tesler early on brought up that he thought it was important to have, that, that maybe he wouldn't, if we weren't profitable in a year, that he would like for us to revisit that. And then he, and then he just said that, you know, he, he wanted to see if this could be amended or a motion could be made in order to, in order to at least work that in so that we had some sort of sunset clause, or at least milestones to say, "Here we are," and something from a, from a business perspective that gave us clear, a clear plan as to where we wanna go, and then as we're going there, how we're gonna get there, and, and if we're on track. And that's what, that's what businesses do. So to, to, to lose point, I, I think that that's very important, and I think for us to come up with a business plan after the fact is counterintuitive, and I don't think that that's the way. I, I think that this program will work, and I think that what we did with MECA, that I think that where we started it and the late implementation hurt us. But I think that, I, I do believe that thinking outside the box and looking for ways for alternative funds, that those are important things for us to be looking at in many different areas, and this is one of them. But I don't think that this is something that we should be jumping into tonight without having a clear definition of, of, of the path and the milestones that we need in order to make sure that we're successful. I want it to be successful.
Well, here's, here's the issue. It's already May. Now, if we sit here and hedge on this, we're gonna go through the same thing that we went through the last time. Parents are gonna go, "Well, now the board is not sure what they wanna do, they're doing this." The reason I suggested the finance meeting was... The reason I suggested the finance meeting was just to come up with a plan. I think we need to go ahead with this, we need to recoup the money, we need to let the parents know, but there's no reason why you can't set up a plan after that and say, we're going to do it for next year because we've, we're making that commitment. And then at the end of next year, if this is not working, because we're not going to cut it off in the middle, then halfway through or April of next year, we say, look, this just isn't working. People are not coming to it. But to do it now, I think we're going to sabotage it.
I want to comment on Ms. Antelis because she's correct. The longer we keep postponing this, nobody's going to put their children into a program that the board has not approved. So now you're looking until June, and this is what happened last year. Nobody put their, their children into Mecca because it was not approved till July. So we're going to do this, we might as well not even do it.
Right. And just-
As, as Amy said, we can do this in, in finance. We've already had board members ask for a, an update, a complete update every single month. We already had Ms. Jensen tell us that we have 21, 23 confirmed people for next year. It's May, we're going to get more. So the longer we put this off, the harder it's going to be to get people to commit now. So that's just my opinion.
And we've made phone calls to parents talking about the enrichment program. I really think we need to move ahead. We, through the Finance Committee, we've given these ladies the permission to do these calls. I think if you stop it now, you're just going to sabotage the program.
Just to clarify, I, I agree. And I think, I do think this is a great program. I think we should go forward with it. I think, I don't know about fellow board members, if we can come up with some sort of sunset, like Nelson was saying, I'd be okay with it. And then we can work on, Amy's right, we can work on the plan after.
We can approve this and then we can have somebody make an emotion for sunset clause if you want to put that in.
Because I know we've talked about it a lot in finance and we have, we've kind of formulated a lot. I mean, we've talked about this ad nauseam. But just to get it out there for the public to hear that we actually are committing to something. And it could be, and I don't want to say an estimate, but it'd be as close as we possibly, you got to make a good faith estimate, I think. I still think, I agree with Ken, it's a great, I think this is a great plan.
Okay, so, Mr. Tesler?
Sorry. Again, no disrespect to anybody. I do think it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great service and a, and a great plan and, well, great program that we can provide and make some money. But just as thinking out of the box, maybe other board members can discuss this too. If the Finance, why did we have to wait a whole month? Couldn't we have a Finance Committee within the next week to discuss this, come up with the numbers and the plan and have, just have a special board meeting next week to discuss this so we don't have to wait all that time?
We can have a Finance Committee and then bring it to the next board meeting with, with the plan, but right now we have an agenda item that we need to take a roll call on.
I mean, because all this, all this motion is doing is just having the Superintendent and the Board Secretary take the steps to start the implementation. And we've really already done that by calling parents and surveying them.
And if I may, I just want to remind, remind the board of an earlier meeting where the board charged the administration with developing a gradual plan to begin to assume the kinds of services for our district that would generate additional funds akin to the BASK program. So that's what we're doing.
So at this time, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
I'd like to make a motion.
We are in the middle of a roll call.
Ms. Antelis?
Yes.
Mr. Chierola?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosi?
No.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, excuse me. This time, we will go to number seven. Is Marietta going to take it?
Yep, Marietta?
I hope we can kind of focus a little bit.
Marietta, Marietta, Marietta. Are you doing the PowerPoint?
Yes. Well, it's going to be that there, I guess, if I bring it forward.
Talk to the board.
Okay.
Or kind of move to the side so that you can kind of talk to everybody.
With, with the microphone, with the microphone.
With the microphone.
Do something here.
Move the microphone, Marietta.
No, I'm taking it out of the way. How's that? Is that good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all right.
Okay. Ready? That's okay, that's okay. Okay, tonight, we also have a presentation. Next week is Special Education Week and we'd like to celebrate our programs. We'd like to celebrate our students, their families, our teachers, and I think you're going to really enjoy this brief montage of how we integrate our special ed students with our gen ed students throughout the programs. So if we can begin that.
Hello, my name is Richard French. The following is a video several weeks in the making. We traveled throughout the district capturing events and programs in our schools showcasing special education students and their achievements. We hope you enjoy it. At Monroe Township High School, Falcon PALS students participate in an adaptive physical education program. PALS, which stands for Peer-Assisted Learning Socialization, consists of 12 seniors, six juniors, and five special needs students that participate in a peer-interactive physical education program. The class integrates socialization and character education with team-building and fitness-based activities. The Falcon PALS are committed to making a safe, enjoyable learning environment for all students involved. At Brookside, students with autism develop social and communication skills through interactions with regular education students during PALS, which stands for Peer-Assisting in Learning Social Skills. The students with autism practice asking and answering socially appropriate questions with their buddy and work together to complete a cooking recipe. After the recipe is completed and enjoyed, the students work together on a structured activity to enhance their social skills and friendship. Some of the activities this year have included crafts, games, puzzles, mazes, and iPad games. At Mill Lake School, students are engaged in activities that let them demonstrate empathy and understanding that people are different in many ways. Teacher Denise Quinn and her class read and discussed the book Andy and His Yellow Frisbee, which is about a boy who prefers to play alone, spinning his yellow frisbee despite the attempts of a friendly girl who tries to engage him in play. Students then try spinning frisbees themselves and are prompted to think about why Andy would like doing it. In this activity, the emphasis is on accepting people for who they are and learning how to use a variety of friendship skills that may lead to positive interactions.
How can we be a friend to someone who is different, who is different to us?
Treat them really nice. You can ask for their names.
And that's where empathy comes in. How do you want to be treated if you're having trouble with something and you don't understand?
You treat people how you want to be treated.
I love that. Give me a high five. Good job. Okay. Now, boys and girls, you've built a great puzzle here and here's a message that I want you to go away with. We are all connected, all of us. All people are connected somehow. And we've built a puzzle with autism answers and questions that explains to us when we had this discussion, how we can understand and have empathy for people who are different.
At Berkeley Brook, third, fourth, and fifth grade lunch bunch students from Brookside School visited second grade classrooms for an autism awareness activity. These general education students shared their knowledge of autism as well as the experience and the importance of being a friend to students with autism.
People with autism are wired differently from other people. This means that their brains work differently.
People with autism also have, often have a hard time making friends or learning how to act around people.
Many of the things we do every day can be difficult for people with autism.
Remember, even though people with autism, they have different views or are in different friends, they are special in lots of wonderful ways.
People with autism do not like to be surprised. They feel much more tangible when they're predictable.
People with autism sometimes find it hard to talk or find what words to say.
People with autism are massively ill.
People with autism may like to play in different ways than you do, but just like you, they enjoy playing.
I like lunch bunch because you get to help others get to special needs.
Lunch bunch is really fun, but you are helping someone with autism or other disabilities to help yourself be a better person.
You can help your friends out, make friends in your grades or in special classes.
PALS is like you being a teacher to special needs kids.
At Woodland School, fourth grade general and special education students participated in a children's yoga class. Yoga promotes inner strength and confidence, self-esteem, a feeling of well-being, and respect for others. Yoga is also used in the classroom to enhance literacy and help the students focus, relax, and develop self-control.
Hi, Antonio.
Hi. My name is Al Pataha and nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
You too.
Also at Monroe Township High School, students Uchechi and Antonia hosted a meet and greet with Superintendent Dr. Hamilton, other administrators, Board of Education members, and parents. The purpose of this event was to showcase their job sampling activities toward the newly built apartment setting and to preview the new Falcon Life program for the 2013-2014 school year.
And this is the bed I made. This is the bathroom we uses. And this is the cabinet if we put foods. And this is the sink. We wash our hands and all washes the dishes. Have a seat, everyone.
This is a picture of the school store where I walk the school store putting clothes, t-shirts, sweatpants, t-shirts. Actually, this is the notice of where we sign in.
We watered that ceiling, finally relaxed them in red foil. These are the pictures of me making the bed in our new apartment. E.N.
Wow, what a show in here.
I'm doing cookies.
Good job.
Thank you. There were a lot of people who were involved, from teachers to administrators to Boris who put this all together for us, high school students who videotaped all. They are in our special ed department. And I think something to remember is with Ms. Quinn said to all of her students, we're all connected, and I think tonight, we should take a look at that and celebrate for special education. Thank you.
Thank you, that was really, really nice. Okay, we're going to go to our student board member reports. Student board member.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This month is a busy month filled with a lot of testing. On May 4th, the SATs took place at Monroe Township High School. May 10th is a half-day due to junior prom. AP testing is taking place from May 6th to May 16th. The multicultural fair will be held on May 17th in the cafe at 7:00 PM. Also, the New Jersey Biology exam is from May 21st to May 22nd. And school is closed on May 27th for Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the agenda but not to Mecca, please state your name and address and for the record. Mecca? If, if you would like to.
Mark Klein, 53 Turnberry. I want to compliment Mr. Preziosi for having enough guts to do the right thing, and that is to table the vote. And the reason why I'm saying, it's not taken away from the other people on the board, but when you have questions that are not set in stone and you have a tremendous amount of taxpayers complaining about it and all they want to know is the truth, actual figures. Basically, what Ms. Antelis just did is what Ms. Pelosi did when it came to voting on Obamacare. We're going to vote on it now and I'm going to read it later. And that's what you have here. As far as BASK goes, let it be, I'm not a lawyer, you're going to be, you're going to talk the void. You have a three-year contract with BASK, if I'm not mistaken. If you go out on your own and you take business away from them, they have a right to break the contract, which means you stand to lose $100,000 that they're presently paying. You know that that's a going operation, highly successful. I'm not saying what you're going to do here is- I'm not saying what you're going to do here is not. But we're not at the point that you can afford to make another mistake like the iPads. The iPads, that should have been a pilot program. They went full bore. We lost a lot of money, and I'm not looking to lose more money here. I thank you, Mr. Preziosa. Well done.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Tom Nutzstein, 15 Nathaniel Street. This goes to a question on the agenda, actually on what's missing from the agenda, I feel, once again. The superintendent's report, starting on October 8th, 2006, running to 12/16 of 2009, included an item called Violence/Substance Abuse/Estimated Violence/Vandalism Costs. And I certainly have brought this up numerous times in the past, and now I have the hard evidence that it is no longer in since very recently, actually. Why is that no longer here? And what do we need to do to get it back? Why was it ever even taken out?
Dr. Hamilton?
I know we do the Violence and Vandalism Report according to...
In October.
Right. In October. And that's what we're required to do. However, if that's information the board directs the superintendent or BA to put on, that's perfectly okay.
But why was it ever taken out? Obviously, they must have directed them at some point. Where was the motion to remove it on 12/16?
I don't know that there, I don't recall that there was a motion to remove it.
Right. So it sounds like it should have been in there all along. If there was no motion to take it out, and it's been in there since 2006, it stands to reason that it should still be in there without any board action, correct?
If the board wants any. It doesn't need board action, it just needs some direction, that's all.
But who gave the direction to take it out? Obviously, we did something without direction, and now we don't want to do something.
I don't know that it was a deliberate action.
Okay. Well, could somebody, I mean, I don't see why you can't check. If it was in there on 12/16/2009, like I show on this paper, why do we need the board to do anything except whoever does that report should just put it back in?
We'll make sure that it's in on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Or would you prefer quarterly, which is easier for you?
I mean, we have the information system. I don't know why it's taken out.
I don't either.
Actually, I didn't know it was in there.
Okay, we'll look at that.
I'm Joe Homoki, 61 Hoffman Road. Back in November, I was asked by President Kathy to be on the Committee for Growth in the district. And a couple minutes later, she asked me if I would chair that committee, and I said, yes, I'll do that. And I had nothing to do with who the committee members are and so on, but we did have three meetings. The first meeting was quite well-attended, a lot of people there, although there was a very heavy administrative presence. The second one was very much the same. And the third meeting, unfortunately, there were more administrators than people from the township. So I'm asking you, Kathy, and the board, to appoint to this committee or search out people representing all segments of the community, because there's no sense in having a study made if there's no input from the people throughout the township. I don't want to get involved in what you voted on before, because I don't really know enough about it. I'm familiar with the BASS program, didn't the other one know. But my concern has been and is what happened the last three meetings that we've had. It's very obvious that space for students in Monroe Township is at a critical point. And what's going to happen is, this particular program, I'm not against it, but it's going to take up space. It's going to take up space from students who are up higher, up in the grades. So that's my concern. And the way I see it now, two or three years from now, three years from now, there won't be any space, and the only option is, let's build another school, or let's add on to a school. Because Reed District is not going to work if there's no space in the northern part of the township. So I'm just simply saying that my main concern is that space is very, very critical, and we have to be very careful how we use it. Now you're shifting special ed from here to the trailers and so on. Eventually, there's no place else to switch these people. So you have to do something. And of course, the only option is going to be that you're going to have to come up with a plan to build a school. And of course, you know already that the high school in about three or four years is going to need admission. It's going to be necessary, because the numbers are there. And I just want to say two more things. The decision that the committee made up to now, and the committee continues to work, the number-one decision was that we need an updated study. And what's the status of that? Have we started that? Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, we have commissioned a demog, we were looking for a new demographer, if you recall.
And when do you think it will be done?
Did he give us a date yet, Mike?
I don't recall seeing it yet.
Yeah. I don't know that he's given us a date. His commission is relatively recent.
Well, anyway, whenever it's done, whether it's June, or July, or August, the committee will reconvene, and I hope by that time, we have additional members that we're looking for. And of course, the other thing is, we did expand, or we did, we're told that there is room at the middle school, at Applegard School. And I guess your team already has started to create classrooms, new classrooms, is that correct?
Not yet.
Not yet? But that's going to, it's in the works?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to mention about the growth that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Homoki. Shell Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. Will the nepotism policy control the MECA hirings?
Yes.
Yes, it will? Oh, well, because it's a different entity, so I want to be sure. So clearly, the nepotism policy is in effect for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will any board members be recusing themselves on personnel R? Number, page nine.
Sixth grade play? Sixth grade play?
Yes.
I don't see any reason why any sitting board member would need to recuse themselves from that item.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman's relative is not on the...
That's not his relative.
Okay, thank you. And I just would like to know if, and I might have misunderstood Ms. Antellus, but I thought she said that they made a decision in the committee meeting. And I'd like to know, are things decided by committee or decided by the board?
The committees make recommendations to the board.
Okay.
And then the board will vote on anything that needs...
So I hate to just get involved in semantics here, but when it is said that the committee decides, I think that that's not really the case. It should be a discussion here.
It should be recommended.
Okay, well, I didn't hear that. I heard decided.
It should be.
So it should be recommended, and it should be discussed in public, which lately it has been, and I commend the board for that. And I think that's all I have right now. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the board? Public. Seeing no one, we will close public forum, and we will go to the approval of minutes for public Board of Education meeting, April 17, 2013. Mr. Masters and Mr. Chiarella, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the closed session meeting of April 17. Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The approval of the minutes for the Special Board of Education meeting, April 13th, 200, April 30th, 2013?
Second.
Chiarella, Mr. Masters, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ms. Antellus abstains, Mr. Kaufman abstains. And the closed session meeting of April 30th, 2013. Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Mr. Tesler? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Antellus and Mr. Kaufman. At this time, we will go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. At the next Board of Education meeting, or the June meeting, the first meeting in June, the administration and members of the superintendent's advisory group will be presenting the State of the District address. And this address will include highlights from our elementary, middle, and high schools, along with key departments in the district, along with an analysis of our student achievement data. So we're hoping that that meeting will be well-attended. Madam President, I would recommend that we host that particular meeting in the Performing Arts Center.
No, not a problem.
Okay. And we will also have our CUSAC review, which is scheduled for May 30th. We are ready, we've been ready for the last two months for CUSAC. So I have no reservation or concerns about our ability to, again, pass that process with flying colors. Moving on to the superintendent's report, the enrollment data is listed there. Again, I continue to call your attention to the number of students in our district that continue to grow. I also would like to point out the enrollment for out-of-district placements that are listed in your agenda. And the home instruction, those students that are homebound for various reasons, those numbers are included for your awareness as well. Moving on to item three, our fire drills and study drills are enclosed on your agenda. Again, each school has been compliant with conducting the drills that are required by law. Moving on to the personnel report, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that personnel items A through AA be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellus, are there any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antellus?
Yes, and recuse myself on item T, like Tom?
So noted. Mr. Chiarella?
Excuse me?
That's only because it happened to another board member.
Oh, yes.
You can't second this motion.
No.
No? I didn't realize.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
This is up to AA?
Yes.
AA, yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, recues on item S's and Sam.
So noted. Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through AA passes.
Thank you.
And moving to board action items, Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that board action items A through I be approved by roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tesler. Comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton?
Question on G.
Mr. Masters?
That's the stipend position, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Zarneski?
On C, the field trips. My understanding that there's no cost for nine out of the 10 field trips that are there?
Jeff? Dr. Gorman, I'm sorry.
I don't have the list in front of me.
I only showed a cost, or saw a cost for, I'm guessing it's a bowling trip for the ninth through 10th, 12th graders.
That's the MECA program trip?
Maps program.
What are the some of the...
$210?
Let me just see. That's the Maps program. That's a curriculum-funded field trip.
That's the only field trip that we're paying for? There's no cost on any of the other ones?
My belief with, let me just make sure I'm in the same place you are, but my belief is that the others are paid by either PTO or students.
Maybe in the future, we have some kind of notation on there?
If there's zero cost, then we don't, then it's funded by students and parents, and/or PTO-raised funds.
I had that question a couple months ago.
I'll get the list, and I'll just double-check and make sure with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's actually not a bad suggestion. I'd like to know who's paying for it. Is it the PTAs, the PTOs, or the kids, whatever clubs? That's not a bad idea.
Small notation on the side.
And it's a little recognition, I guess.
Yeah, Lou, are you paying for it? Or Ira?
I could probably pay for lunch.
That's part of the approval process. I have no problem giving you those details.
Okay, thank you. So in the future, we'll just add that to the agenda.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Then roll call?
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosa?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through I passes.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Hi, we will go to the Business and Administratives Report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through E be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antellus. Are there any comments or questions for Mike? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosa?
Yes, on everything but E.
It's a no on E. So noted. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through E passes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll go to the Board President report, and mine's going to be very short. Couple of months ago, during a board meeting, I talked about, I talked about sending a joint letter to the Governor for Monroe and Jamesburg in regard to the legal situation we're in with the bond referendum money. So I did get a little email back from the Governor's office, and I just want to read it to you. Dear Ms. Kolpanowicz, thank you for your recent request to schedule a meeting with Governor Christie to discuss specific emergent financial and budgetary issues with the Monroe Township Board of Education. Unfortunately, the Governor has a very full schedule, and we are not able to accommodate your request at this time. The Governor sends his best wishes for a successful resolution to the outstanding issues as you continue working through the Department of Education and Commissioner Serf's office. So that's where we are with that. It doesn't look like they're going to be able to help us. Could be a long wait. And as far as I know, S 1701 is still alive, since we haven't heard it's died yet. So at this time, we'll go to committee reports. Is there any committees that need to report this evening? Ms. Antellus? Yes, we had a Finance Committee meeting. One of the items discussed was the MECA. The second item was the Food Service Management Company. We had a request for proposal, and Mr. Gorski updated the committee on the request. He discussed the timeline and the charges introduced to this RFP, which will better serve the taxpayers and administration's oversight of staff. He also gave us a fixed assets appraisal schedule. Mr. Gorski, you want to just explain what that is?
Yes. Under accounting pronouncement, GASB 34, the district is required to do a fixed asset appraisal annually, whereas assets valued at $500 and higher are accumulated in a report, and assets valued over $2,000 are compiled in a separate report. The first lower threshold is for insurance purposes, the latter is for recording depreciation and categorizing the assets in a government-wide financial statement and the comprehensive annual financial report at the end of the year. And we are going out to quote, and we will be recommending to the Board of Education the lowest qualified quote presenter, in an effort to procure this service efficiently.
Thank you. We did have the next committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, June 13th, and I'd just like to announce that our meetings, Finance Committee meetings, will now be held at Brookside School Media Center, because the public, a lot of public has come. I think being in that little conference room is just not viable anymore, and I think gives the chance for all the public to come and listen to the Finance Committee meeting. So the next one will be at the Brookside School Media Center, and we will have it before June 13th. That's it.
Okay, we had a Buildings and Grounds meeting on the 30th. I'll go through them as fast I can. We had some concerns over at Oak Tree, traffic, and some animal control with the rec fields directly behind the building, where people were maybe walking their dogs and not leashing their dogs correctly. And they were also driving over school property with their cars to get into the back there, which is an unauthorized parking lot. We authorized some signs, some shrubbery, and we also are going to allow the rec at their expense to put a portable bathroom back there so they can use that. Berkeley Brook trailer update, we're looking into some issues with mold in one of the trailers. Barkley Brook trailer update, we're looking into some issues with mold in one of the trailers, we're going to rip off some of the facade and make sure that it's not invasive before we go ahead with to your extension. Barkley Brook crawl space had some issues with termites, we're also requisitioning a design spec for 2014 to remediate some of the asbestos that's in there. The DRTRS efficiency report, which is the Transportation Efficiency Report, I don't know what the acronym stands for. We are the best in the county as of the new report, and we're among the highest in the state, and that resulted in an increase of, is it $20,000 in transportation aid awarded to the township? The PSENG grant has been awarded and started work in Barkley Brook, they're replacing all the light fixtures with more efficient ones, there's no cost at the district at all. Applegarth had some paperwork and some tests that we just had to finalize with some of the issues over there. And FEMA, we're moving ahead with our damage claims with FEMA and some of the grants for possibly new generators and some other stuff. Supposedly a positive meeting, hopefully by June we'll hear about it, so next month.
Thank you. Anyone else have a committee meeting?
I have another one.
You have more?
I have more. April 26th was the Middlesex Regional Education Service Commission meeting. I'm not going to go through, it's a pretty lengthy agenda, but you want me to read it? You want to read it? I have no problem motioning that you read this entire thing.
No, don't do that, because then we'll have to vote. Then Mr. Tesler will have to read.
That would be great. Basically, we talked about possibly selling more of the programs to some of the surrounding districts, including Brick Township. There was discussion about school specialty, which is another similar program that actually fired Chapter 11, it was bought out by its stockholders. They sold six unused school buses, because they actually have underutilization of their school buses. We also did the superintendent's evaluation, if anybody really cares.
Not our superintendent.
No, not.
Just to clarify.
Yes. And we also talked about some of the programs they have for Autism Awareness Month, including children singing the Star Spangled Banner at some of the minor league baseball games. It was very nice, actually.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will go to other board business, is there any business by any member of Mr. Tesler, the Board of Education?
Just real quick, I'll make it official, I'd like to make a motion to include the vandalism and substance abuse report to the agenda of each board meeting.
Second by Mr. Chiarella, any comments or questions? Can we just, all in favor?
Yes, let me just write down the motion, please repeat the motion.
Motion to include the vandalism and substance, excuse me, abuse port, abuse, I can't even speak tonight.
Abuse report?
Yes. Abuse report to the agenda of each Board of Education meeting.
Second was?
Mr. Chiarella. All in favor?
Wait, I have a question. Do we know what this report is, right?
Yeah, essentially all it does is it, what the report would do is extract from the suspension reports, for example, the infractions that are specific to violence and vandalism, and if there's a cost, and if parents are responsible for the person.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentient? Motion passes. Any other board business?
I have another.
No, go, because I got a couple of things.
My next installment of construction around Monroe, so we have Monroe Chase, if anybody lives near Oak Tree, they just opened their development, it's about 100 units. And then we also have Monroe Stratford Meadows, which not a lot of people know about, it's actually behind Oak Tree. They're putting up 26 condo units, each housing four condos. So we're talking another 150 kids, and there's also the Orchards, Orchards, I think, which is behind CVS, which I think is an even larger one, but I couldn't get the numbers, so I'll run those numbers next meeting. But if, again, if you just, I just want to put it in numericals, if you push that out over five years of development, and I know Monroe Stratford Meadows is already, I think, sold out, maybe one or two aren't sold, they're not even built yet, but they're completely sold out, we're talking an additional $2.15 million we're going to have to absorb in student costs. So that brings the grand total so far to $9,827,757, over five years. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Masters?
You're just quickly, you're including the, what's called the Village, and that, those figures, which is the, that's the Mount Mills Road development as well, that's 500 units.
5.738 million.
Is this the cost of adding that many students?
Yes, it's our cost.
That's our cost.
Using the 14063 number.
How many students are they expecting to?
Monroe, and they're talking 522 units, I believe, and the .75 coefficient, so you're talking 80 over three bedrooms, 80, about 80 students, I think, in 27, per year, though. Oh, that was over the, that was total, I'm using the mayor's .75 coefficient, because I think that was more accurate. Yeah, over that, so it's 5.7 for the Mount Mills one, that's the Village.
The Village.
And then the 33, Route 33 one, A Mountain, what that one's called, that's 1.9 units.
Monroe Manor.
Monroe Manor, that is part of Monroe Manor over there.
There is two condo buildings that are in the process right now of being sold.
Does that conclude your report?
Next meeting I'll have the Orchard, and I think there's another one going up on the other side.
And you'll have total of adding all?
I'll keep totaling it.
Okay. Sounds like fun. Ms. Antelis, it looks like we have a lot of work for the Ad Hoc Committee.
Mr. Gorski and I have been actively pursuing Senator Greenstein on S-2307, and Mike, I know you spoke to her today, so maybe you could relate what she had to say?
Yes, thank you. That's absolutely correct. If anybody's new, the district has introduced our in-house prepared legislation to address our state aid underfunding issue. We recognize that the senior population in Monroe, which exceeds one-third of the population according to the last decennial census, is hurting because of the amount of taxes that is, are being absorbed by our local tax levy. Eighty-five percent of the district's revenue sources are raised through the local levy, consequently, most of the seniors are paying the taxes. And in an effort to address that, we wrote legislation specific that if a district has a population in excess of one-third, 65 years or older, that the state fully fund their own model for funding schools, called the School Funding Formula, and afford the district that full amount without any amortization. That would be an approximate additional $9 million for our district annually in the form of state aid. As Finance Chair, Ms. Antelis and I have been in constant communication with Senator Greenstein, who introduced this legislation to the Senate, and we have a favorable report from Senator Greenstein yesterday, that she feels she's made inroads with Senator Sweeney, who's the power broker in the Senate on the Democratic side, and Senator Sweeney promises his cooperation with this legislation. If, like most political issues, we may not get the full amount that's proposed, there may be limitations that are added to this, there may be additional qualifiers, but I think from speaking to Senator Greenstein, at this point, it's more probable than not that Monroe is going to be receiving an additional award of state aid, based upon our efforts to introduce this new legislation, and Ms. Antelis and I will keep the public and the board updated on this.
Thank you. Kudos to you, Mike and Ken, for all the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
I also want to mention, on April 19th, we had a Monroe Education Foundation fundraiser here at the school, which it was the teachers versus the Monroe Police Department, the teachers once again won. I just want to thank Mr. Goodall, thank you so much for all your effort in getting things done, to Elliot Feldman, and I know, I saw him here before, who was the captain of the team, so thank you, Elliot, to the Monroe Township Police Department. And I don't think I can say enough about the custodial staff in this building, they are amazing. You would just turn around, they'd be standing there, there was nothing that they couldn't do for you, it was a good night for all. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the special needs programs. I have a special needs daughter who went through Monroe Schools, she's 29 years old now, and I really wish that we had had these programs when she was young and she didn't have to go out of the district. These programs are made so that we keep our children in the district and aren't paying these high costs of these programs, besides the fact that children get to stay amongst their peers, so again, kudos to you, Dr. Hamilton, and Mr. Gorman, Mike, for putting together this program at the high school. And on April 14th, here, I'm sorry, at the middle school, the Henry Rickles Holocaust Committee had the Yamcha Shoah, I just want to commend our students, I believe they were here yesterday again, Rickles. So we bring Holocaust survivors into the school to talk to the students, and then we ask them to submit essays. This is not mandatory, this is strictly a voluntary program. Last year, over 196 students submitted essays. You can tell that not a sound is made when these people are in the room, it's just an amazing program, so thank you for that, and that's it.
Anyone else have any other board business?
Everybody's done. I want to discuss what we talked about before about the sunset policy, if we're going to do that. Now, I don't even know if that's the, I had to look it up, that might not be the correct terminology, because it's sunset clause or sunset law is really, I'm just reading it as we, it talks about a law that actually expires, unless it's re, unless it's extended, which maybe it is what we're trying to go for here. But I think minimally, we should have milestone meetings, like Ken said, we could probably do them at the Finance Committee and then bring them back to the board as a whole for deliberation and discussion. Me and I were talking about a date of the October board meeting to kind of figure out where we are for next year. And I don't want to throw anything out there in stone, I'm just throwing it out there, see what people think.
So we'll think about it, we'll bring it to Finance, we'll see what Finance comes up, and then Finance can make a recommendation or a report to the board at the next.
I think minimally, though, we should have milestones set up, or at least milestone reporting set up at every Finance meeting, which we kind of do now, making it more official, so we can kind of keep track of this. And I'm thinking it should encompass expenditures, enrollment. That's the meat of the matter, I mean, we're not going to start talking about electricity consumption or something like that, but that would go to expenditures, really. And again, to formally bring it back to the board as a whole.
Okay, and you're on Finance, and Amy's on Finance, so.
Set something up within the next two weeks.
That's the first half, the second half is, do we want to actually set a sunset, some sort of sunset provision on this? I don't know if I really want to be 100% in that, I mean, because a sunset provision is only as strong as the members that support it, we can always just re-extend it like we did already. So I don't know how strong it's going to be if we say, you know, by October 16th, if we're not break-even profitable, do we want to cut the program then? Or I would be more comfortable saying, by October 16th, if we're not break-even profitable, we should have a major discussion on this. A full board discussion, too.
Not a problem, I don't think that's a problem.
So basically, what I'm saying is, we do milestones every Finance meeting, so we keep it in Finance, but I think if we have an issue, either before then or on the October 16th meeting, almost a drop dead date, we bring it to the board as a whole.
Okay.
Any of you have a problem with that, it's really, I don't, I'm trying to mix both the Finance and the board as a whole.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
I just would like some clarification on the next Finance meeting, you said June 13?
No, we had just planned for June, but now that we're discussing this, we're going to move it up to somewhere within the next two weeks.
I thought it was in May. You had one planned, and I could be wrong?
I don't think so, I think at the next Finance meeting, yeah.
Did we just have?
We talked about June 13th, I think, or something.
That's after the next.
No, we're going to have it within the next two weeks, before the next board meeting.
Okay. Is there any other board business? Seeing none. Closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. Personnel, employee number 002025, employee number 003190, employee number 003497, employee number 003272, to discuss personnel matters. Student matters, harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents, 35 through 37, and a continuation of board confidentiality discussion. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Is there a motion to go in closed session? That much? Fifty? Forty-five minutes? It should take about 45 minutes, probably less.
Do you want to move the public forum ahead?
I think 45 minutes, probably.
Probably good, okay. Any, a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Ms. Antelis, is her second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters.
Do we want to move the public forum ahead of closed session, since it'll be 45 minutes?
There's a motion on the floor, so take action on that motion, and then you can entertain another motion to move the public forum. There will be action. Presumably.
Yeah, so we might just want to keep it the way it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentients? Then at this time, the board will move into closed session. At this time, the board will reconvene into public session, and let's see, we will go to public forum, anybody wishing, from the public wishing to speak?
Should I do my motion?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Whereas the Superintendent of Schools has recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education withhold Dean Quest's employment and adjustment increments for the 2013-2014 school year due to the reasons set forth in the Superintendent's Letter dated May 8th, 2013, to Dr. Quest advising him of the Superintendent's recommendation to withhold his increment, and whereas, following due consideration, the board agrees with the recommendation of the Superintendent and the reason therefore. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that Dean Quest's employment and adjustment increments for the 2013-2014 school year shall be withheld so that his 2013-2014 salary shall be fixed at $65,224 plus $5,750 for his doctorate, which is the same as his salary for the 2012-2013 school year, and be it further resolved that within 10 days of the date of this resolution is, has been approved by the board, the Superintendent hereby is directed to provide Dr. Quest with a copy of this resolution, notifying him that his employment and adjustment increments have been withheld.
Motion is second.
So.
Ms. Antelis, Mr. Chiarella, any comments or questions? Then we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antelis.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you.
That's it, yes, thank you.
Then we will go to public forum, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Shell Arminio 9, Nathaniel Street, I would, before I do anything else, I'd like to volunteer for Mr. Homoki's committee.
Absolutely, you can volunteer.
Okay, you can get in touch with, I'll give you my information at the end.
We'll have Mike write that down.
Okay. Can you please review the closed session, the resolutions of the closed session of April 17th and April 30th, please?
Excuse me?
What happened on April 30th and April 17th in the closed session? You have the minutes, right?
I do not have the minutes with me.
Well, can someone?
On the computer?
Was it the Superintendent's evaluation?
The 30th was, yeah.
The Special Board of Education, with the closed session, is, was in regard to the Superintendent's evaluation.
Okay.
No, it wasn't.
30th Special Board Meeting was the Superintendent evaluation.
Was that, April, okay. And what about?
And that's ongoing.
Well, you approved the minutes, so once you approve the minutes, it should be open to the public.
Well, if we approve the minutes tonight, they won't go up until tomorrow.
Yes, but it's already happened, so what's the resolve?
It's the Superintendent's evaluation.
And what happened to the?
We had a discussion. It's ongoing, his evaluation.
Okay, and what about the 17th?
Just to be.
Was there any resolutions voted on after those sessions?
Just want to point out one thing on the Superintendent evaluation, there, it is a deliberative process, there has been no formal action taken yet.
Okay. Do, I don't have the minutes for the 17th of April.
Once you have the closed minutes, I believe they're open to public scrutiny. Like I can Oprah the closed-minute sessions at this time. Correct?
One moment, let me consult with my.
Can you shut the timer off, please?
I don't know how to set the timer off.
Well, just shut it off and give me some space here.
Well, no, you have 57.
We've waited for you, so give me a little break.
Well, it wasn't 45 minutes, so that's good.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Detective.
Oh, by the way, the staff, the support staff, I would like to just applaud for the kinds of stress they're probably under a great deal of time, so thank you very much.
Indeed, that's an understatement, thank you.
Yes.
It is.
And I've always been treated with respect and courtesy at the board when I go, which is frequent, so I do appreciate all the staff members, and I believe there's a young lady in the back here named Mary Ann, that's very helpful as well.
Yes. The matter on the 17th was a residency hearing, where the Board of Education, sorry about that, the Board of Education heard a matter presented by Dr. Hamilton, and the Board of Education, Board of Education approved a parent's appeal for a residency matter, and the child remains on our registers.
Okay. And I missed this before the other public open mic, so I'd like some qualification on F, Board Action, F, the Avid Implementation Agreement. So all that money is going to the town, to the school, to the Board of Ed? Number F, as in Frank, it's recommended that the board approve the Avid Implementation Agreement effective July 1st. Can you explain those numbers?
Do you want to take it, you have it in front of you?
The specific numbers, but I'll tell you exactly what the fees are, without using exact numbers. There are two sites in the district, the high school and the middle school. Each comes with a license for the year, it's about $3,800, I do believe. There's also a curricular resource for about $525. The rest of it is all professional development at the Summer Institute, which is three days in the summer, and that's the extent of the Avid Agreement.
Do we pay that out, or we collect that in?
We pay that as part of our budgeting process.
So does any, is there, is there individuals that get paid this, or is it all for training?
It's all for training.
But are, and what individuals are involved in this?
Each site does a, sends out site team members and teachers, and the teachers attend the training in the summer.
Okay, all right, I can look into that. Thank you.
Nelson Chan for Ashley Court. I just want to know, have any of you looked at the state-issued report card for the high school?
Is that the one that's on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Did Dr. Hamilton look at it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. Are you satisfied with that report card?
I am very proud of some parts of it, and I think it presents opportunities for growth in the other part. What happens with that report card, just so you know, it's, it's embarked, held in embargo for generally two weeks before it goes to the public, so that principals and superintendents have an opportunity to review it. So we actually do see it before it goes public.
Okay, and so the numbers that I'm going to read are accurate. Academic achievement for the high school, 18th percentile amongst our peer group. College and career readiness, 29th percentile for our peer group. Graduation and post-secondary, 44th percentile for our peer group. I understand that we fared okay when compared to other high schools in the state, but amongst our peer group demographic socioeconomic background, we have not fared so well. Is that a fair statement? Given these numbers?
I would say in some areas, that would be a fair statement, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I really think that we need to focus where we should be focusing.
I agree.
On this, rather than, I'm running a daycare center. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Please come to the microphone.
Mary Ann Lester, 44 Avenue I. Mr. Prezioso had a statement for Mr. Poy earlier, and I was wondering if he could read it now or Mrs. Koloponov, which, as I understand the problem earlier, there was a motion on the floor already, and you were waiting to vote on it, so that is why it probably wasn't read? Can we have that now?
No, it wasn't read because it was not given to me by Mr. Poy to read to the board members. Excuse me?
So is there a policy that precludes Mr. Prezioso or any other board member from reading a statement in proxy from another board member elected by the taxpayers? Is there a policy concerning that?
It's a parliamentary procedure. Usually, if somebody had something that they wanted read during a board meeting, they would give it to the Chair of the Board to read. Then I would know that that's coming from a certain person, and the reason that there's, they want something read, doesn't happen very often, but it has happened in the past.
Okay, and that's, and what policy number is that, or where can I?
It's not, it's just parliamentary procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I need to set up a meeting for the board members who are involved in the evaluation to meet within the next couple of weeks to talk about the Superintendent's evaluation. And I don't have my calendar here, so I'll have to rely on you.
I have my manual calendar right here.
We all need to have one of those. I know Mr. Poy is on vacation, and he will be back on the, this is June, he will be back on the 18th of May, so are we free, would be free that week after the 18th? Anytime?
One second.
What do you have? Well, you don't have. The 22nd, 23rd?
What's this for? What meeting is this for?
To discuss the Superintendent's evaluation, a special meeting. Well, what we'll do, what we did last time, is we opened it up to the public, we had public forum, and we went into closed session, we'll do the same thing. Yes.
Six.
Is the 22nd good for everybody?
Hold on, I'm checking with my calendar.
You have a live calendar, right?
My live calendar. May 22nd?
It's Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
It's a, the date planner.
Huh? She says, yes, yes, I know two sides.
Would somebody like to put that into a motion to have a Special Board of Education meeting? I could do that. Yeah, I could do that. Make a motion, well, I won't make a motion. I recommend that we have a Special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, May 22nd, to discuss the Superintendent's evaluation.
Second.
Mr. Tesler, Mr. Masters. Excuse me?
Third.
Oh, you're thirding it?